Welcome to our candidate forum. Today, we're giving you the opportunity to get to know the candidates running for Putnam County Board of County Commission District Four. Larry Harvey, the Republican candidate, also the incumbent, Ronald Burkhardt, Non-Political Association, and Douglas Hayes, Republican write-in. Rather than have our forum live on the radio, we've chosen to video-record them so that you can watch them at your convenience and also share them online if you'd like. And our partner Gospel Vision TV is going to show them as well. We just want to give you the opportunity to get to know the candidates that are on the ballot. The candidates have all been furnished with a list of questions ahead of time, and each one of them will have one minute to answer each question, and we'll take turns with who answers first. And we also will have a timer, so if you hear that in the background, that means the time is up and we'll move on to the next question. Both Hope FM and Gospel Vision are nonprofit ministries, and we just do this as a community service. We don't accept any political advertising. We don't endorse any candidates or political parties, and so we feel we can give you an impartial candidate forum just to help you make an informed decision as you go to the ballot. Well, with all that being said, we're going to get started and let you meet our candidates for Putnam County Board of County Commission District Four. And with the first question, we'll start with the person who's already in office, Larry Harvey. We'll give you one minute to tell us about yourself and why you would like to, once again, serve as county commissioner.
Well, good morning, Robin, and thank you, listening audience. I was appointed by Governor Scott back in 2014, and I've served since then, and I've served admirably. I married, my wife and I have been married 38 years. We have three daughters, five grandchildren, two great-grandchildren. I grew up here in Palaka in Putnam County my whole life and went to school here at the Catholic School, Mosley Middle School, Palaka Central, and Palaka High, St. John's River Junior College at that time, and then went on to University of Florida, got my 220 license for insurance, and had a successful career in that. So I believe I'm your candidate, I'm your guy, and I would hope that and pray that you will consider me for reelection on or before November 8th. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ron Burkhardt, same question, tell us about yourself.
Yeah, I'm Ron Burkhardt. I'm a retired firefighter, paramedic. I volunteer out at George's Lake Volunteer Fire Department. I work part-time at my church as the maintenance man, just to have something to do. I've always been involved in helping the community. I've spent most of my life as a public servant. I feel like I bring good ideas and good experience into the arena here as a county commissioner, and I believe I could really help the county to get over the challenges and problems we're facing at this time.
Okay, thank you. And Douglas Hayes, why do you want to be our county commissioner and tell us about yourself as well?
Hi there. I'm a five-year veteran of the U.S. Coast Guard, spent my whole tour in the Bermuda Triangle doing drug ops. And when I left that foreign country called Miami, I went as far north as I could go till it got cold, and I'm here, found my piece of heaven. I'm running for county commissioner because I'm a firm believer in transparency and citizen participation. I'm trying to look up for the little guy and listen to the people. The people spoke. We had a strategic planning meeting, and they, people were surveyed. I have noticed that the commission is not following the guidance of what the people want. Prime example is, why did they gerrymander the districts and do a redistricting so that Leota Wilkinson could run for office when they didn't even look at the census prior to doing so? So it's little things like that where I'm going to dig in and protect our interests as citizens, not the chosen few.
Okay, thank you. Our next question, Ron, we'll go to you to answer that one first. What do you think you're going to do that's different from the incumbent that you feel would make you a better commissioner?
Well, I'm more of a people person. I'd like to be more accessible to the people. I'd like to get out there and drive the county every day and find out what's going on in the county from the people themselves, be more open to their ideas. We've got a ton of people in this county that have great expertise and experiences that we could fall back on for ideas on how to fix our problems we're facing, and I believe if we incorporate them into the governing process, it will make it a whole lot more conducive to solving our problems, to do exactly what they want, not what we want, but what they want. We're here to serve the people, the people are not here to serve us. So we should be out there making sure every day we find out what they want, not just a quick slap, knee-jerk reaction answer. It should be thought-out, open process where everybody can be, everybody can be involved, and they can all have transparent look into what the government's doing.
Thank you. And Douglas, same question, what do you feel that you would do differently that would make you a better commissioner?
Well, to start, I would be holding town hall meetings in my district on a regular basis. There's been attempts that really have been more of a dog and pony show when there's a decision-making process, but I've discovered that the commission's small population has already had their mind made up, and so the town hall meetings have been just a showpiece, and listen to the people. The other thing is, in full transparency, prime example is the budget. The budget should be a line item type situation, be presented to the people, along with the strategic plan should be, the people should be educated about that during town hall meetings, and the comprehensive plan, which is what is the biggest issue right now. They're manipulating the comprehensive plan so that we can become another St. John's County. And the people spoke. We don't want to be a surrounding county overpopulated, and so then it's those kind of things that I will be having my finger on the pulse.
Thank you. And Mr. Harvey, do you feel that you have made improvements to our county by your participation on the board so far?
Robin, we have made tremendous improvements with transparency. We've opened up the board meetings to have multiple options for, for public comments. Our budget process is line by line. We go through that. We actually look at the ad valorem taxes that we receive. The constitutional officers get almost 70% of that, and now they don't have to come with their hat in their hand asking us. They get a percentage-based budget from this point on. It's exciting to see that in action. For example, one of our constitutionals came with his budget, and he received more money than what his budget really required. So with those percentages, we've done a lot of things differently in the county, and I'm excited about where the county is going, line by line. We look at it, we've already started looking at next year's budget, line by line, and that's an exciting time for us. So I think we've made a lot of transparency. We've done a lot in the budget process. We've got a lot more work to do. I'm excited to be there and do it. Thank you.
Thank you. For our next question, Mr. Hayes, we'll start with you for this one. If you're elected, what are your top priorities as a commissioner?
Top priority is to fire the county administrator. We are not getting a return on investment. He's a bureaucrat. I'm a firm believer in the reduction in the size of government. He showed no loyalty to us. He's looked for employment, which I don't fault him in other counties, but it's the quality of life, not the money. That's why we're here. The other thing I would be looking at is defunding the Chamber of Commerce with the economic development and the tourist development money. Make put that at a department level, and it can be a case-by-case basis when the funding is presented out. If we pull that money, they wouldn't be able to make payroll. It's all tied up in payroll instead of projects. And then the third thing would be is to move the minute, the public comment of the minutes of the, during the county commission meeting and also the workshops. Larry Harvey, when he was chairman, had decided to move it to the tail end of the meeting. It stifles the citizen and the ability to participate.
Thank you. And Larry Harvey, if reelected, what are your top priorities as commissioner?
There's, there's no doubt that we need to keep Putnam County as rural as we can. We do not want to look like some of the surrounding counties around us. So our comp plan is addressing that along with our land development code, and we're looking at how we can control growth in a proper format. Also, funding our sheriff and our fire department, our first responders, is so important to me. We have a ton of volunteers, we've got more paid staff now than we ever had. We are protecting the citizens better than we will ever, in my opinion, have ever done. So those are my top priorities, to keep Putnam County safe, to promote Putnam County in a positive manner, not only here, but in Washington and Tallahassee, and representing ourselves well, making sure that we tell our story properly to get the funding mechanisms that we need to get help with. That's what my priorities.
Thank you. And Ron, same question, what would your priorities be if you're elected?
My priorities would be public safety, number one, because we've got to keep our residents safe. That's just, goes without saying. Our infrastructure's terrible. We need to start working on our infrastructure. Our streets are falling apart. If you drive down 100 or 17, you pretty much have to take your car to the shop whenever you get to where you go to because it's beating your car to death. We should, that's just unacceptable. That should never get that bad. Our streets should, of course, be better. We should also, we're having a problem now with wild animals running on the streets. We had people mauled by dogs. We've got to do something to improve our animal control, so that would be one of my priorities. I would also like to see us invest more into parks and recreation to help get the kids involved more in something outside of the trouble they can get into on their own. If you leave a kid by himself, he's going to find trouble to get into, so I'd like to see us take care of that. I'd like to control the growth. We need growth. Without growth, you're stifled, you're going to die, you're not going to do anything, but we need to control the growth. We don't need unbridled running over the county growth where we have 100,000 people moving in the next year.
And our next question is kind of along those lines. Larry Harvey, we'll start with you for that one. People are moving here all the time. How do you feel about growth and the changes that it brings to our county?
You know, Robin, seven years ago, when I first got here, I met Jesse Penusio, the Department of Economic Opportunity gentleman, and he said no one ever invited him to a county, so we invited him. We had a meeting, and his exact words were, "You're in the hub of all these counties. They're going to find you." Well, let's be honest, they have found us. Putnam County has been found, and people are buying property, and they are moving here. Control growth is the best thing that we can do, and our land development code, our comp plan handles those things, and we're currently writing that now. So I'm excited about that. I'm excited that people are calling me every day, asking if I can help facilitate a meeting, even tomorrow evening, with, with our planning department. What can they do with the property they just bought? How can they develop it? Can they give it to their families? We can do things like that, but it's going to be controlled, and we need to expand our business footprint also. We have a few businesses that pay a lot of the taxes that go on in this county, and we need more of that. Thank you.
And Ron, this question gives you the opportunity to expand a little bit on what you were talking about before. How do you feel about growth and the changes that it brings to our county?
Well, growth is good. I mean, you've got to have growth, but it's got to be controlled. It can't be runaway growth. If you look at what's happening in counties around us, they've just opened the doors and let everybody that wants to move in without taking into account how it affects their infrastructure, their public safety, the police, the fire, they have to answer so many more calls that we haven't increased that much that we can handle 100,000 more people. I mean, if west end of the county, you have two firefighters in the station. You'll run them to death quickly. We have hardly any deputies make it out to the western part of the county, so if you put a bunch of houses out there, what are you going to do for law enforcement? Is it going to be the old west where everybody takes it upon themselves to control the law? We need to also look at our infrastructures. Our streets are beat up now. We can't put all those other cars on our streets until we get our streets fixed. Electricity, Clay Electric's going to be run crazy trying to put power to them, or FPL, whichever source they use, but if we can control the growth, we can make Putnam County prosperous and maintain the beauty and the wonder it is now.
Thank you. And Douglas, same question, what are your thoughts on growth for our county?
I'm so glad you asked, and one of the things that I had discovered, the writings on the wall this time, as to why for generations the good old boy system has existed, and if you notice, my slogan is "No More Good Old Boys." It's all been about real estate. This time around, if you notice an appearance in the signage, there's a gentleman by the name of Travis Hudson, he's our state senator. Well, his day, he's a big developer, he's got his fingers on the east end or south end of the county. Be forewarned. The people that are being put into offices so they can manipulate the building codes so they can do developments. The solution is micro farms. To maintain our agriculture and have the marketability, they can get the same return on their investment, and we can also be self-sustained with a food source. We are cattle county, and we are an agriculture county. The citizens have spoke. We don't want to be on top of each other like the neighboring counties. Look at the traffic the way it is now. The other part is that as you increase population, you need to increase services, and so it's like a dog chasing their tail. We've already developed unfunded liabilities with hiring services when they could be a volunteer basis. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ron, we'll start with you for this next question. Do you feel that you're approachable as a leader and someone who's able to handle citizens bringing you issues and that you'd be able to resolve them?
Yes, I feel I'm very approachable. You can come up to me and you talk to me anytime you want, and I've always been good at solving problems. So together, if you have a problem, you can bring it to me, we can work together and get, like I say, the inputs from as many people as we can in this county because we have very good people in the county, they're very educated, a lot of them have great expertise that are beyond anything I could know right offhand. No one person can know as much as the total populace. So if you bring me a problem, I will get as many viewpoints as I can, and we will work out an acceptable answer to that problem, and I've done that through my whole life. So it's just a continuation.
Okay, thank you. Douglas, same question, do you feel you're approachable as a leader who's able to handle citizens bringing you issues and that you'd be able to resolve them?
Oh, absolutely. I might talk your ears off. I'll proudly embrace that I'm long-winded, but I'm also a listener. You can't learn without listening, and mutual respect is an important thing. Everybody is special. You have to listen to them, and from there you can take and digest. One of the most important things I feel with the county commission meetings and having the three-minute public comment is that that person took the time out of their life or their work world to express themselves to the commission and to be put to the last where you have no idea how long you're going to be there, because it's absolutely insane and stifling. And Mr. Harvey has spoken and changed that. The idea was that if a group of people were to hijack the meeting, as he said, that it could change the pace of the meeting. But if you have a group of people that show up with their push rooms and pitchforks, I think you'd want to address that first. So you put the people first. Thank you.
Thank you. And Larry, same question.
You know, Robin, in this world, we need to know who has the light, who has the map, and who has the shovel, and people are important to us. We have tons of citizens committee. We have government that's run by citizens out there through MSBUs. We have opportunities for everyone to be a part. This morning, by 6 o'clock, I fielded two phone calls about roads and problems, and I've already went out and looked at them and asked the people, "What's the solution that you..." Because you know the solution. I'm here on the radio every Tuesday. "What's the solution in your neighborhood?" We know that, and if we don't listen, then we're not a leader like we're expecting to be, and we should be that leader. So I've always listened, I will continue taking phone calls at 5:30, 5:00, it doesn't matter to me. Call me, let me know what the problem is, and let me know the solution too, and how we can get that handled, because there's a lot of great things happening in Putnam County, a lot of good people who serve on our boards, and they need to be treated as such. Thank you.
For this next question, Douglas, we'll start with you. Putnam County animal control is often overcapacity and in desperate need of a better facility. How do you plan to address this?
Actually, got the wheels in motion in regards as a citizen. One of the things is the, the location of the shelter. In fact, it's, this has been going on for a long time. I've actually applied to be supervisor of the animal services. The first stop is that we are legislated as animal services. The mainstream is that pets are now family members. If you look at the largest animal, no-kill shelter in the United States is Jacksonville, and they are animal services and rescue. It's time for a rebrand. The other part is, we have a dog licensing program that's not being educated or enforced. We have a potential of $300,000 for operating cost when we're barely touching $50,000. If you look at the bookwork, there's a department that has no leader. They've been bounced back and forth between the sheriff's office and building and planning. And so then we need to develop, in the real world, you have a department, you have a tax, and you have a fund. All that finances is in the general fund, so there's no transparency.
Thank you. Larry Harvey, same question, animal control.
You know, Robin, I have to be very careful in what I say about that. The bid is on the street for a new animal control center right now. It is under design-build, so I have to be a little careful in my comments about that. But let me say, the citizens committee chose that location. They chose the location there because the sheriff's department wants to introduce a vet tech program using the prisoners to help and get them out of jail with some type of a skill. We're going to be overcrowded the day we open. That's personal responsibility. Some people don't take care of their animals, and they dump them. Case in point, I was headed home last night, just right around the corner from me, five cats are in the, in the road, and they don't belong to anybody, and that's not acceptable. There's got to be personal responsibility. But that new animal shelter is going to be great for Putnam County. It's a no-kill shelter. Currently, we're a no-kill shelter unless an animal causes harm to somebody, and then we have to put the animal down, but truly, personal responsibility will help protect the overcrowding of the animal shelter.
Thank you. And Ron, same question about animal control, your thoughts?
Well, I'm an animal lover, so I definitely don't want any animal put down that doesn't have to be put down. I think that we could use volunteers a lot of times, and I've never really seen a big call for volunteers to come help, and if we need to build extra, we can apply grants everywhere if we can't afford it. There's grants for animal control everywhere. Every dog food manufacturer has a grant program to give you money. I mean, I think it's Subaru advertises how much they give for animal control and stuff like that as grants. So we can apply for grants, we can get as much money as we need to help with that. If we can get volunteers that want to come in, if we have to build something ourselves, just shelters for the dogs, we've got, got to be 100 framers in this county that would come in and volunteer to help frame for that. You've got roofers that'd come in, probably volunteer to help roof. We'd have to supply the materials, but they would supply the knowledge and the manpower. We should never have a problem housing the animals we have to pick up.
Thank you. As a Christian ministry, our listeners frequently ask us things that they're interested in knowing from the candidates, and one of the things that's always at the top of the list is what role might your faith play in your service on the Board of County Commission? And this question first for Larry Harvey.
Robin, you can't do this job without being a Christian, without having faith in God, without waking up every day with a purpose in your life, with a calling, without getting on your knees before the meeting, praying for your fellow commissioners, walking through the halls, praying for your staff, getting there before anybody else does, and praying for the audience that's going to come, that you will be able to listen to them. This job is, is very much faith-based, and if anybody thinks it's not, they don't realize what goes into serving the people of Putnam County. I work for 73,320 people, and I don't take that lightly. I take that very seriously, and my faith plays a big role. Without faith, I couldn't do the job that I currently do. Thank you.
Okay, and Ron, same question, what role might your faith play in your service as a county commissioner?
Well, I'm a very spiritual-type person, so my faith is the basis for everything I do. I mean, I volunteer at Lamb, giving out food, parts of Knights of Columbus, I work at the church, I volunteer at the church. I try doing everything I can in a way that I think God would want me to do it. And if you're a county commissioner, you should go into work every day looking at the people, saying, "Each one of these is a brother or sister of Jesus himself." And if you can't do that, you've already missed the boat. You're already out in left field, you're not going to make good decisions. You should look at everything and say, "What would God want in this situation? How can I make this serve the people the best? Make God's children happier on earth, make their life easier, make their life more pleasant." And that's the way I look at everything I do.
Okay, thank you. And Douglas Hayes, same question, what role might your faith play in your service as a county commissioner?
Well, I'm living proof that there is a God, and he has a sense of humor. When I was out there in the woods waiting to die, and he let me know and gave me the power and the will to live. And one of the things that perpetuates me in this endeavor is God. He's my father, he looks out for me. It's just me, my dogs, and my Father God. And one of the most important things is the honesty. Mr. Harvey had just lied to you. We are legislated as a kill shelter. We're a member of the No Kill Shelter Coalition, but we still have a kill behavior. What they do is they designate the dogs as an aggressive dog. The big thing is not to lie to the people. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, we could have come up with a much longer list of questions for the candidates today because there are a lot of areas of concern in our community, and we tried to just cover a few of the basics, but this next question will give you the opportunity to cover things that you might feel should have been addressed. So Ron, we'll start with you first. Are there any other areas of concern that you feel we should address, and you'll have one minute to cover that?
Yeah, I think we should promote Putnam County as much as we can to the outside world and let them know we're not just a stopping point on your way to Orlando or a stopping point on your way to Jacksonville. We are a vibrant, wonderful community. We should, I mean, promote the St. John's River, the Rodman Reservoir, to fishermen. When you're watching these bass tournaments on TV, there should be a commercial for Come Fish Putnam County, because we are the bass capital of the world. We could get so much income from the tourist dollar, people coming down here to fish our lakes. I mean, we are just a wonderful place, and nobody knows about us. If anybody ever hears of Putnam County, the only time they hear of us is when something bad happens. We should promote the good that's going on in this county, and we should be more transparent to the people of the county when we're doing something. Every line on that budget should be in the paper for people to look at. Here's what we're looking at doing, get their input on that. And if we can keep the people involved and promote our county, that'll bring business and everything else here.
Okay, thank you so much. Douglas, same question, any other areas of concern you think we should cover?
Absolutely. If you read the newspaper, you'll see where there's attempts, but we have a substance abuse problem in this county to beat the band. It's not only nationwide, but we're the epicenter of it. Where the problem lies is we do not have a detox. There's funding that's been available to our local mental health. $100,000 are going to hire 12 people to help somebody find help. That's not going to do the person that has reached rock bottom. I, who has been drug and alcohol-free for over 10 years, knows the struggle. They need, when a person reaches rock bottom and they need help, they need help three days ago because they were pondering. They reach out for help because they're getting ready to do something drastic or completely criminal to fulfill their addiction. We do not have an outpatient or an employment program. Now, we do have some of those that have been provided in our jail, but going to jail is not the appropriate way to detox.
Okay, thank you. And Larry, same question, any other areas of concern you feel we should cover?
You know, Robin, thank you, and I tell you, I'm very excited about our port capabilities that are coming on. Recently, we were, we, the helper Representative Payne and Senator Perry at that point really helped us get to the Port Council. We're a member of the Port Council now, and what that means is we can start really looking forward to port activity at our port here on Comfort Road. That's going to bring a lot of commerce into this county, and the state is actually fixing their Road 17 and fixing their Road 100, and we're looking forward to be able to move goods and services and bringing a diverse business force back into the county. Exciting to be the president of Save Robin Reservoir. I fought for that for many, many years. I'll continue to fight for our nature, our historic preservation, and our quality of water that goes on. So we've got a lot of great things that are happening here in Putnam County, and you've got to be a part, you've got to be a part and be ready to go, and I'm excited about that.
Okay, thank you. For our final question, Douglas Hayes, we'll go to you to answer first. Why should people vote for you?
People, you need somebody to speak up for you. You need somebody to listen to you. The leadership has been just moving right along on the benefit of the good old boys. The epicenter of the good old boys is the Chamber of Commerce. Larry has actually been one of the leaders in working for the chosen few, so don't be fooled by the "I serve you" stuff. It was he that proposed the idea of moving to the statue instead of allowing it to go up for election. It is he that has decided to move the minutes of the meeting to the tail end to stifle the citizen. And by the way, it was not the citizens' group that had decided to move the animal shelter to the prison. Actually, it was the commissioners that decided. Their recommendation was a piece of property by Triangle Park. So don't be fooled. He's a professional politician, I am not a politician. I'm a leader, and I'm coming to the defense of the little guy and not the chosen few. Thank you, and God bless.
Larry Harvey, why should people reelect you for Putnam County Commission?
You know, Robin, I pray and I hope that people have saw that I've done a good job. We just want... We just went through a primary where I got almost 60% of the votes, went through a nasty primary and took the high road. I'll take the high road today regardless of the jabs that are being thrown in this direction. But Putnam County deserves a leader and they have a leader in me and they have a good administration staff. And I'm excited about that. And you can find more about me at Larry Harvey at PromotePutnam.com. I ask for your vote on or before November 8th of this year. And I thank you for the abilities that God has given me and that you can work with me at any time you want and I would be there for you. Thank you.
And Ron Burkhart, why should people vote for you?
Hey, I'm honest. I'm hardworking. I'm just a normal person that's going to work very hard for you. I'm approachable. You can come talk to me anytime you want with any problem and I will sit down and we'll try hashing it out and finding a solution. I'm not going to promise you I'm going to get your roads graded tomorrow because we only have so many people driving graders. They've got to do what they can do. I will try to increase the pay for the people in the county so we can keep our employees and not lose them to the surrounding counties because for us to pay to be a training school for all these other counties is costing us bunches of money out of the budget that we could use to help the county better.